Hi, everybody. Welcome to another addition of Experts Online. Part two, so to speak, or special session two. In this session, we're going to focus on the fitting aspects, the clinical practice aspects with regards to cochlear implants and music. Before we get started, I'd like to just go through just a key few points with you. First, as a reminder, please name yourself, try to put your name, organization, where you're from. To avoid background noise, if you could, please mute your microphone and also mute your smartphone or mobile. For a stable internet connection, we recommend that you close all other programs on your device. And all your comments and questions are welcome. And with that, let's get into things, so to speak. My name is Jen Robinson. I'm a senior product manager and audiologist here at Medel, and I'll be the moderator for this session. And we've got three distinguished guests today. Very excited about this session. First, we have Professor Benoit Gudet from the University Hospital of France. Dr. Melanie Gilbert from the University of California at San Francisco. And Alejandra Cantidas, Senior Product Manager here at Medel. To start off our session, I'd like to hand things over to Professor Benoit Gudet, who is Chief of the Department of Otolaryngology at the University Hospital in Norens, France. And with that, Professor Gudet, I hand over to you.
Okay, thank you very much, Jane Fer. It's a great pleasure for me to be here. I start my presentation. So thank you very much to give me the opportunity to present our studies about the cochlear implant fitting and the music perception. We know that the main goal of a cochlear implant is to improve the speech understanding in quiet and noise. And we know also that the sound provided by a cochlear implant is less natural, is metallic, and it's poor quality for music perception. So the question is, is it possible to improve the cochlear implant fitting for better music perception by modification of the frequency coding? And without diminishing of a speech understanding of a patient? So we... Sorry. Okay, so for the frequency coding in the cochlea, the focus of our study was to to try to understand if in modifying the frequency coding, we could have a better music perception. So the frequency is coded by two ways, the natural tonal topi with the high frequency at the base and the low frequency at the apex. And there is also the phase locking, which make that the firing rates of the spironanglians represent the fine structure of the acoustic signal. So the question is, if we provide a fitting, a coating of the fine structure, do we have a chance to have a better music perception? It's the first question. The second is because of the natural topi, we know that if, when we implant an electrode, the size of the cochlea is different between patients, the insertion can be also, the depth insertion can be, can be also modified. So there is a shift, a possible shift between the natural topi and the standard fitting of the patient. And the question is, if we adapt the natural tonal topi to the fitting of the patient, do we have a chance to have a better music perception without decreasing of the speech understanding? So for that, we did two different studies with different patients at two moments different, but with the same methodology, it was prospective randomized crossover dubbling studies. It's mean that the patient was randomized in two arms. The first arms had the first step and first fitting. And in this case, we studied two things, two different things, the coding or not of the fine structure, or the natural topi, or the standard fitting. And the first arm, at the first step, the first treatment, the first fitting, a test, and in the second step, the second, the second fitting, and the second arm, the reverse. So we had the opportunity to evaluate different, the different fitting, and to see if we had a better music perception and speech understanding. So to set the music perception, we use the multidimensional qualitative assessment, the Gabrielson scale. It's two piece of music, a suite of Bach and the symphony of Gustav Mahler. And those piece of music represented the patient. And the patient has to evaluate on a visual scale the softness, the brightness, the clarity, the nearness, et cetera, et cetera, and the total impression to give the music perception, to have an evaluation of the music perception. We did also test on the Melodic Contour Identification. It's a software which provides a different kind of of music contour, rising, raising that flat, et cetera, et cetera. And the patient had to recognize the good music contour. The other evaluation was an history questionnaire, which is a quality, which evaluate the quality of life in relation to the sound quality. We did also a melodic recognition test. We had the patient to choose two pieces of music they knew very well. So as you can see, it's very, very famous musics, classic music, Beethoven, Ravel, French, French songs, jazz, rock and roll, et cetera, et cetera. We had the patient to choose two, two pieces of music and to evaluate on the visual scale, the quality of the recognition of the melody they had. The results for the first study, so we evaluate the presence or not, the fitting with the fine structure or without the fine structure, we included nineteen patients and twenty ears. We didn't find any difference in tonal odometry. And we had a better speech understanding in a quiet with FS4 fitting compared to HDCS. FS4 is the fitting with the fine structure coding. Concerning the quality of the music perception, we had a significant effect of fitting effect with the fine structure coding with a better clarity, softness, and nearness for the patient with the FS4 fitting, with the fine structure coding than the other patients, the other fitting. In term of quality of life, we had a better quality of life with a positive correlation with the Gabriel score for patient with FS4 fitting. So the conclusion of this first study, the fine structure coding allows to have a better perception of the music with no degradation of tonal odometry and speech understanding. There is an improvement quality of music perception concerning the clarity, the softness, and the nearness. The second study concerning the tonal topi of the patient. It's today included twenty-six patients with no rated worrying. And all the patient had a deep insertion with a tip angle absorption over five hundred forty degrees. All patient had a CT scan after the surgery in order to to evaluate with the Medel Autoplan Software, the position of the electrode. And with the Greenwood function, it allowed to calculate the corresponding frequency bandwidth of all the electrodes. So it was the crossover study, one arm at the tonal topi fitting, then the classical fitting, and the other arm, the classical fitting, then the tonal topi fitting. The results here are the differences in term of frequency between the classical fitting from three hundred to five thousand hertz. And here in red, the tonal topi found with the CT scan and the Greenwood function. And in black, you have the differences between the two fitting. So the differences went from, it was between nineteen to four hundred hertz. So we had significant different frequencies between these two fittings. In term of tonal odometry, we didn't had any differences in the quiet situation in term of speech understanding. In a noise situation, the speech understanding in noise was significant better with the fitting, the tonal topic fitting. You have here the speech understanding with different signal and noise ratio. And on all this, this situation, we had a significant better speech understanding in noise for the patient with the tonal topic fitting. In term of Gabrielson, we had also better significant music perception, mainly for the clarity, for the fullness, the nearness, the spaciousness, and the total impression. This is the music perception. Here you can see that Gabrielson's score was significant, much higher for, sorry, for the patient with, for the tonal topi, tonal topic fitting. And we had also a better melodic contour identification for this fitting, tonal topi fitting. And also here, the, sorry, for the music recognition.
No slides, I just have a...
So the conclusion is this fitting respecting the tonal topi, there is no degradation of speech understanding in a quiet situation. There is a clear benefiting noise. And we can say that to correct tonal topi position of the pitch allows to have a better speech understanding in noise, mainly because the perception of harmonics, which are masked by noise, are well represented. And there is a great effect on music perception, mainly on quality of sound, melody contour, and melody recognition. So in conclusion, adapted fitting allows to improve music perception without degradation of speech understanding. It allows, it shows that there is a great importance of the frequency coding in, for cochlear implant patient. For low frequency coding by phase locking improves the quality of sound. And respecting the natural topi allows to have a significant effect on speech understanding in noise and improve the quality of music perception, melody contour, and melody recognition. So those results encourage to propose to all patient, fitting adapted to those, to their anatomy, and to consider the insertion depths and best of the anatomy to propose a personal fitting. Thank you very much for your attention.
Thank you, Professor Gudet. I just have one quick question for you. Based on your findings of your study on tonal typicity, what would you say to clinicians out there working with experienced users? Because this study was in flesh, freshly implanted users. So with experienced users, what would you say to clinicians with regards to music perception? Should they adjust to a more tonal topic map for experienced users?
Yes, the question is, do we have to, this result, as you said, is only very fresh implanted. The patient were evaluated six weeks and lasted six weeks. The result was maintained over time. It's a good question. I've known the response. But the first results encourage to propose to all patients. And we can, we can wait that this result will continue to be better with the tonal topic adapted fitting than the classical fitting. So in our department, we propose those kind of fitting for all patients right now.
Okay, thank you so much. I know that you've taken a break, so to speak, from surgeries. And we really appreciate you being here with us.
Thank you very much.
No, you need to get back to the surgery. So again, thank you for joining us today.
Thank you very much.
And we'll move on to our second speaker of the afternoon. Dr. Melanie Gilbert. She's a research audiologist at the Sound and Music Perception Lab at the University of California in San Francisco in the US. And Melanie, the stage is yours, my friend.
All right. And can you see the slides all right?
Yep, all good.
Wonderful. Well, thank you for the invitation to speak with you today about my favorite topic, which is music and cochlear implants. I work at University of California, San Francisco, in Charles Lim's lab. And we're very appreciative for the support from Medel on our projects. There's two main areas of research that we work on, cochlear implants, the music perception, and also creativity and the brain doing fMRI tasks. And there's our website, in case you'd like to look up our current projects. So I was asked to talk a little bit about the areas where people with cochlear implants struggle with music perception. So specifically pitch perception, timbre, harmony, and auditory stream segregation, which is the ability to hear different instruments at the same time, or different voices at the same time. And one area that is very easy for people with cochlear implants is rhythm perception. So we do a really great job at that. And cochlear implants do a really great job, generally speaking, with speech perception in quiet. But music, because of these difficult areas, can really vary. And it's, it's been shown that musical training can improve music perception. But part of my job is to develop and collect normative data on music tasks to quantify how much somebody is improving with a given processing strategy change or with time. Because there is a need in our field for better tests, better metrics of music performance and appreciation. So now I'll go over a few of the tests that our lab has developed in the past few years. So the first, the most recent that we've been working on, that I'm excited about, is a pitch interval comparison task. This is a collaboration with Andrew Oxenhamb from University of Minnesota. And this graph that I'm showing you is a pitch map or a frequency allocation table for a cochlear implant. And the x-axis is just frequency or pitch, and the y-axis is electrode number, channel number. And the gray boxes show which frequency range each channel is responsible for. And then if you do a high resolution CT scan of the cochlear implant, you can measure where each electrode is sitting in an individual's cochlea. And that's what each of the black dots represents. And you can see that there's a mismatch there. And the red boxes show a remapping, a more accurate pitch map. Some call it anatomy-based fitting or CT-based mapping in order to better approximate the anatomy and the insertion of that person's electrode array in their cochlea. So the question is, does changing this to make it more anatomically accurate actually improve the pitch place mismatch across the frequency spectrum? How do we find out? So we developed a task where we have notes from pure tones, but essentially like notes across the frequency spectrum in little intervals. And we try to see if the distance between two notes, maybe on the low end of the frequency spectrum, is the same perceptually as that distance in the middle of the frequency spectrum. So I have an example here. There's a little bit of audio. You're going to hear an interval that is low and an interval that is mid. And now you'll hear what it might be if it's warped. So you may hear that in the second example, the upper interval is much smaller. Well, that's if you have normal hearing or an accurate pitch place map, which is not a given. So we have been working on developing normative data for this task. We're comparing the low frequency range to the mid-frequency range, and then also comparing the mid-frequency range to the high-frequency range. And we can quantify that warp with this task. We can see how many different notes is, is different for somebody between the mid and the high, for example. And then the hope is then if we change their pitch map, will we see an improvement or a corresponding change? That's the first task that we're working on currently. A second task that we've worked on recently in our lab is timbre discrimination. So some people don't understand what timbre is. Like, I did not understand when I joined the lab. And I learned that timbre is everything but pitch or loudness. So if you have two instruments, like a clarinet and a French horn, and they both play the same note, in this case, G3, with a sustained envelope, they sound different, and that can be attributed to timbre. Here, I'll play an example. So this, you can see on the left pictures of the instruments. And then on the right, you can see the frequency spectrum. And these peaks are the harmonics. And the thing that makes the, these two sound different is the shape of these harmonics, where the peak and where the valleys are, because they're playing the same note at the same volume. But they sound different. And so some people have worked on timbre identification tasks, which is where you play an instrument and you have the person choose which instrument they heard. But you can train on that kind of task quite easily as a CI user. You can hear a sound, know that that is supposed to correspond to a French horn, even though it may sound nothing like a French horn. So you can, we worked on it a little bit differently. We did a timbre discrimination task. And so that is, you'll hear three sounds, pick the one that's different. And this turns out to be quite easy for a CI user and a normal hearing person. This example is showing the, some blends, however. So then we decided to make the task harder. Instead of asking somebody to compare just clarinet to just French horn, we made blends. So the zero dB, for example, is fifty percent clarinet, fifty percent French horn. And we would then have the task, if they, if somebody does all right doing clarinet versus French horn, then we would do clarinet versus the zero dB blend. And then if they do all right with that, then we would go try the ten to zero, and then try the five to zero, and see how small we can make the blend difference for somebody to be able to tell. So it's a way of testing timbre that's not an identification task. And hopefully, if someone has good spectral resolution, we might be able to see these spectral and temporal changes. The third task that we're working on right now, actually, I'm quite excited about, is consonants and dissonance. And harmonic consonants and dissonance. So you could describe harmonic consonants as a sound that is like pleasing to the ear or resolved or the opposite of this would be a dissonant sound. So it's a group of notes that when played together, sounds awful, terrible. Or if it's just a little bit dissonant, it might sound just a little bit off or unstable, are words that people use to describe it. So here are four examples, A, B, C, D, of what we call consonant tiers. So tier A is perfectly consonant. It's a major triad in the, in the bass clef. And you'll notice that the treble clef, the melody, is the same in all four. So it's the same melody, but then four different versions of the accompanying chord. And then tier B has one dissonant note. Tier C has two dissonant notes. And then tier D also has two dissonant notes, but more dissonant. So I'm going to play an example. This is an abbreviated example of the same melody with four different accompaniments. This is A. This will be B. And this will be C. And this will be D. So for people with a normal hearing, C and D can be quite cringy. So we had a previous version of this study several years ago used by our lab that showed just tiers A through C. And for our current effort, we created a tier D that is even worse because our cochlear implant patients often couldn't tell the difference between A, B, and C. The normal hearing folks could. And so I wanted to create a condition where I was sure that the CI users would also be able to tell the difference. And the, the student that we had making D, the tier D, really didn't want to. It was really an awful experience. And I said, just try to make it elbows on the piano. And that was what inspired this fourth and worst, most dissonant tier. So this is some preliminary data, the first time we're showing it, because we're actively gathering data right now. So along the x-axis is tiers going from A to D. And the blue represents normal hearing. And so you can see there's quite a bit of difference from tier A to tier D for normal hearing control subjects. And then the red represents CI listeners. And you can see there's not so much difference between tier A and tier D, but it is statistically significant. And this, the rating is pleasantness. How pleasant are these sounds to you? And so this is a new task that we're working on that I think has quite a bit of promise for if we can improve somebody's pitch map or other settings, that they will, with their CI, they'll be able to tell the difference between the different tiers better. They'll hear a more pleasantness, a more, a larger difference in pleasantness. And I will note that this interesting, in a little reversal here between tier B and tier C, I just tested somebody yesterday who showed this same pattern. So it might turn out to be a thing, but we're early on in data collection for this task. And so pitch scaling is another task, the fourth task that I'll, I'll show you that we have worked on in our lab. So pitch scaling is ordering these various pitches. So somebody's presented with six pure tones. The order is randomized. And then their task is to order them. And so then they take the bars, and for each one, they put them so that a top is the highest and the bottom is the lowest in pitch. And if they do it correctly, it should sound like this. And then we can use this to find out what areas of the pitch range, the, the frequency range they're hearing that they have difficulties with. So for example, this is one subject with their clinical pitch map and their CT-based mapping. And you can see that there's a difference down here in the low frequencies. So we would say here is a problem area. At least for the blues, they have almost no difference for the first five notes. And then when you realign them based on their CT-based map, that improves in the, in the low frequency range. So that's one way that we're trying to get at improvements. Or just even changes with the CT-based map. So this CT-based map, I will cover our motivation for this briefly, since it was already discussed today. But we know that hu- But we know that human, the human hearing ear can span the frequency range from twenty to twenty thousand hertz. But then each of the CI companies presents the frequency range that is deemed most important for speech and music. And within a given company, the default frequency allocation table is the same for every patient typically and for every electrode array choice, regardless of insertion depth or position within the cochlea. And this one size fits all approach does help people hear much better with the CI compared with without the CI. However, we think we can do better by personalizing it further. So this is from a paper from Nikki Jim from twenty eighteen that we wrote where the electrodes are shown here. And then I've made orange the most apical electrode just to show the variability in insertion depth between electrodes of the same depth in just four different cochlea in this group. And it turned out that with the twenty four fully inserted electrode arrays that we had in this cohort, there was about a two octave range difference for terminal insertion point. And then there was about a one octave range difference for where the most high frequency or basal electrode ended up. So there's quite a bit of variability is what I'm trying to point out. So we are hoping that we can restore accurate frequency information by using some personalized pitch placement fittings. So here's how we're gonna try and do it. We get the CT scans. We measure the electrode locations within the cochlea. And then we use both speech and music metrics to evaluate their performance. And then we invent any music tasks or pitch tasks that do not currently exist to try to get at this question. We're able to get quite high precision of the cochlear locate electrode location and the anatomy. And then with quite low artifact. So this is a video that I created that shows scanning through the cochlea on one of these high resolution CT scans. So on the left two bars, you'll the left two panels, you'll see looking at a cochlea that has been like cut down the middle. And then on the top right is the spiral view or the looking down view. And you can see as we drag up and down through the cochlea, you can see the electrodes appear and disappear. And there's a red line that is throughout following the lateral wall of the cochlea. And if you unroll that red line on the bottom right panel from A to C, you see the cochlear duct length. And this is one way to measure total cochlear duct length and then location of each electrode and then calculate the characteristic frequency. So just my kind of final, my final question here is, does this high resolution imaging data give us enough information to improve place pitch mapping? And can we show these improvements clinically? And we receive so many musician CI recipients at UCSF do in part to, I think Charles Lim is a musician and patients want to. They they like the idea of having a surgeon who understands the importance of music. So with that, I'll say thank you for letting me share our work. And we are currently recruiting for a longitudinal study. So if you know anybody who is in the San Francisco Bay area who is looking at getting a CI and would like to participate in the CT based mapping, please send them to me.
Thanks, Melanie. Really appreciate it. I'm gonna hold my questions for you for sake of time and turn on, turn it over, so to speak, to Alejandra Cantidas. She is Senior Product Manager and Audiologist here at Medell in Innsbruck. And her her work, speaking for her, her work is focusing on the fitting of children. So with that, Alej, please.
So everything is is good with my presentation on my sound?
You're great.
Good. So I will move a little bit from the science and we will go more into clinical aspect. Very interesting. The previous talks, I took some notes. And yeah, and I was thinking that I have I I'm meeting Melanie now for the first time. And it's funny because the examples I have here with children emulate in some way the experiments she did with adults. So we will see. So music, I think, is a very nice resource that we can use because music moves to social interaction in an spontaneous way in adults and also in children. It regulates even our moods and it gives us better quality of life. So I think that it's very nice that we can give our CIA recipients this this joy. Music and language are universal. So there are a lot of tribes that they don't have language, but they have music. And there is a very extensive population in the world that they have music and language as as ways of communicating and both share some characteristics as sequences because in in both in music and language, you need sequences to create a message. They both aim for communication. And if we go more into technical aspects, we can see that rhythm melodies, the syntax is and finally emotion conveyed for for those two aspects. If I will center myself only in two aspects, because if not, we need much more time. But if we talk about rhythm, we can see that in music and also in language, we have beats, we have accents, and we have a tempo that takes the the message through. And regarding pitch, we have a frequency of vibration of the incoming sound. But also we have some temporal aspects that are are relevant in in pitch and that can be seen, for example, in the FS4 strategy that takes care of this temporal and place representation when we go into pitch. So whatever is the the starting point, so music or language, they influence each other. And I think that the training of both of them influence and benefit the other ones. So it it has been shown that, for example, the better the speech perception, the better the music perception, sorry, and also the other way around. So when we give children aspects or cues regarding this, this aspects that the children need to develop proper language, which is the first aim. So Dr. Goday mentioned at the beginning of his talk that the speech is like the first goal for a CA patient. But also music, as we said, can be very, very beneficial. And within this hearing range that we are showing here in this diagram at the left, we can see that all the frequencies and the intensities that are needed so to be or to provide the child with enough cues that they can develop a proper language. And if you see, for example, around five hundred hertz, we have discrimination that not only leads into the the possibility or to define or to realize which phonemes they are reaching to him, but also this is necessary to get a cue regarding duration of loudness. That this can be nice for music, but also it's very important to be able to define speech. So again, as I said, the training of one can benefit the other one very well. I will show you now very fast. Let me see. Yes, I still have time. Some clips that shows how we can train these aspects on children. And this can help us also for fitting because when we train these disabilities, then the fitting session with the child can be more productive. So let's see. There is some sound coming here. I hope you can hear it because it's quite soft. So these are sessions that were filmed at Sixtude. It's an institute in in Germany for CI children. Here, the teacher is telling the child that she will hear different musical instruments and that she has to identify which instrument is this one. There are bells sounding. And the child is pointing to the correct instrument. Now there is a tambourine. So here we have different pitches or different frequencies that are work. The the intensity that she's using now is soft. So this is very good. Now this is a bell with another pitch and another timber, as Melanie was showing before. Now we are going to see a little bit more complicated task. Melanie also showed the same with adults. So this child has to differentiate between two sounds that are going to be played. And he has to say if the sound is the same or if if the sounds that he hears are different. So different. Is the same instrument, which makes the task a little bit more more difficult. But this is the same as happen in speech when we have sounds that are similar, for example. Now he's going to do another exercise where these sounds are associated to the animals that he has in the hands. So he has to distinguish between high pitch and low pitch sounds. So this is the high pitch is like the bird sound. Again, the same. Low frequency that represents the bear, the same. And the last one that is the most difficult one because it has to do with contours. And the task in this case, it will be that the child has to say if this sounds nice or if it sounds incorrect. I know Jennifer, I have a little time. I finish soon. Richtig, correct? Falsch, incorrect? So I left it until the end because I I want you to appreciate how little differences can be realized with a child that has never had normal hearing. So regarding the temporal aspects of of speech and the spectral aspects, they also help us for speech in noise, which is very important for children because the majority of their time it is spent in noisy environments as the school. And regarding fitting, it helps us train in these aspects when we do single channel stimulation, when we ask them to tell us if they are listening or or not, the stimulation that we are sending when we are fitting also to compare, to learn to compare between two electrodes. And also we treat other non or let's say cognitive aspects such as attention, memory, and so on. So if we have to think about fitting, I would say that we should take care of the same things for children, at least for small children, non-professional musicians yet, that we look at as when we do fitting for for speech. So verify MCLs, look at thresholds if needed for sub-sounds, especially AGC, map load, take care with compression because this can affect the speech and frequency allocation as Melanie was was showing if is necessary. So thank you.
Thanks very much, Alejandra. And now I think we've got both Melanie and Alejandra on and and if you have any questions, please put it in the chat. I have a few questions as I was taking notes as we went through. Melanie, do you have just some general? I don't know, tips and tricks, so to speak, with regards to fitting for music? Alejandra focused on children's some tips and tricks. Do you have the same that you've seen?
Yeah, so I find that when I'm working with musicians, they often ask if they can bring their own instruments to the session. And I say, bring them. And if they have like a particular genre of music that they like to listen to and they're struggling with, I say, like, bring a recording. And I am happy in the during programming to hook up whatever audio file they want to optimize through whatever speaker or streaming modality they prefer, or have them play their live instrument. And they can play the same song multiple times while I change settings such as compression settings, which is I didn't talk about today, but we've worked quite a bit on compression of amplitude. And so so yeah, so I would say it's it's have people bring the target with them and so that you have the best chance of making a change live that they can hear at that time.
Okay, great. Thank you. There's a question that's come in. And this is to either one of you. Are there any studies of switching established CI users to anatomy based frequency fitting that you know of?
I mean, so so I ran one recently with established users. And that's why this current study that we're doing, it was promising. So we are switching to using newly activated patients because we think that if somebody has had a a maladaptive map for a number of years, their benefit may be limited from a they may have already adapted as much as they're going to adapt. Although I will say that I had a patient in that study, somebody who had been using their CI for both bilateral, both CI's for a number of years, who is a musician herself before going deaf. And she just really, really struggled with hearing the same one pitch, but hearing it as two pitches between ears. Her ears had never fused the two sounds. And I I attribute it to her musical training because she can hear multiple instruments and keep them separate in her mind. I cannot do that. So her auditory stream segregation is so good, she can preserve the difference between two ears. And so we with the anatomy based fitting, we got her two ears closer together. And so, you know, we would play one pure tone and then she would listen with one CI, listen with the other CI. And we were able to try to get these these two different pitch maps closer by basing them both off of her CT. Wasn't perfect, but it was an improvement. So I think there's promise in that even for people who have been activated for a longer period of time.
To to your point, Melanie, Anya Kurtz recently presented similar findings. She looked at bilateral users and adjusting or using anatomy based fitting for bilateral users and found with these experienced users that patients felt more balanced or in sync, so to speak, between the two devices. I have a couple more questions. We're running out of time, but I'm hoping we can get through at least one or two of these. One is, do audiologists and clinicians regularly ask recipients or their families about the recipient's experience, enjoyment, or interaction with music? Do you do? Have you? Either of you found this with regards to regularly asking recipients or or parents?
Are there some questioners for for children and family that they include some question about music in general? So depends if you run the whole questionnaire, then sometimes there is some something, but it's not a dedicated thing.
Okay.
Yeah.
I I would say that I talked to a lot of audiologists at conferences who'd say that you know, time is so limited. And it's difficult to to be asking people and especially well, and I think some audiologists, they don't want to open up a can of worms that they can't fix. You know, if you have very limited time and it's
Very true.
And you worry what the answer is gonna be. You're hesitant to bring it up if you don't have the fix. I would say that even if you can't fix it, you know, I would say it's still important to ask somebody because it really validates their experience, even if even if you tell them honestly, like, I can, I can try, but I don't know that I can fix it today. But I am curious how your experience is with music, because maybe it is something that you that you can you know, that you can make a small change somewhere that might make a difference.
Sure. I've got one more question. This one, I think, for you, Melanie. The the comment and question is, I think it's great to have patients bring their own musical instruments and musical preference in. You perhaps can do this because of your research grant, but how do you feel or do you have thoughts? how do you feel or do you have thoughts about fitting this kind of focus into basic clinical practices?
I will say I did it in the clinic too. And maybe it didn't make me the most popular audiologist based with the comment about having thin walls with other consult rooms. But you could do that in the sound booth, which would, you know, attenuate the music. Also, you could do it with streaming have people bring the musical or have people bring the music on their phone and then use whatever streaming modality they prefer. That would cut down on that. It's one idea.
Well, I want to thank you both for your expertise, your comments. Sorry, we couldn't get to all the questions, but we'll try to follow up afterwards. Thank you for a great session. And I'd like to have all of you continue to join us for our next Experts Online Music Rehabilitation Benefits for Pediatric and Adult CI Users. So stay right there, stay tuned, and we'll be right back.